The whole meeting? The board please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro absent. Martin?
Yes.
Brinkie?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. There are two standing committees with items this evening, Planning and Zoning Committee and the License and Ordinance Committee. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to trustee Cammerer, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you, President Wallace. There are three items on the committee agenda this evening, all of them dealing with the issue of video gaming. The first item is the consideration of video gaming for new businesses and a review of existing and potential future video gaming sites in the village and the legal issues related to that. I would start this discussion by asking staff to take us through the video gaming location map that they put together. Valerie or Jim, could you put that up on the screen and take us through that?
Thank you, trustee Cammerer. I've put up an updated map showing the various locations of established, applied for, and granted places that have the video gaming license. This was recently updated by our GIS person on August 28th. And again, if you just look at the legend, the green, like the top one, which is applied for special use permit for beer and wine, are the two entities that are in front of you tonight. Maxine's, which is applied for one in Brewster Creek Shopping Center right here, and Elsie's, which is applied for one in the town center just across the street. And I've lost my spot, but you know where the town center's at. The yellow areas are eligible for state license for video gaming. Those generally are existing establishments that hold liquor licenses. And they're located throughout the community. I won't go into detail on all of them, but they include places like Silver Lake, Apple Orchards, the Park District, Oak Room, Savory, Bartlett Hills, Villa Olivia, Alfaro, just all the places that we've granted liquor license. They can apply for video gaming license as well because of the liquor license. The red dots indicate the ones that have applied for state licenses and they have not yet received them. Generally, we've got McMay's, Stella's, which is represented by Laredo Hospitality. They are also affiliated and the petitioner for Maxine's. And Bannerman's on 59. And Fire, I'm sorry, Papa Pacino are up in the town center. And those are the ones that have applied for licenses that have not been granted. And then the bottom color, the blue, are ones that have been granted state licenses and are currently operating video games. We've got Brock's Place off of Prospect. We've got Moretti's and the Cadillac Ranch, which are counted as two up on Lake Street. We've got Bannerman's, which is on 51. I'm sorry, Bannerman's has received their game license, Nicodino's that has applied for it. And then the Tipsy Monkey, which is just west of the town center. So those are the establishments that have been granted the state license. So that sums it up as of August 28th of this year.
Thank you, Jim. Next, I would ask that our village attorney would summarize the legal issues with respect to video gaming and the related issues of liquor control.
Thank you, trustee Cammerer. I've spoken to this board or to prior board, the prior board, relative to the issue of video gaming. When it considered whether or not to grant or to allow video gaming, under the act that was approved in July of 2009, municipalities had the option to prohibit video gaming, but they had to do that by ordinance. If you did nothing, it would be allowed. We took the extra step to come up with an ordinance that provides for also a local license for video gaming. But frankly, it is almost automatic if two or three other things happen. They have to have a valid video gaming terminal license issued by the Illinois Gaming Board. They have to have a valid state Illinois liquor license. And they have to have a valid Bartlett liquor license to serve alcohol on the licensed premises. If those criteria are met, it's a ministerial act on the part of the village administrator to issue the license, and there's no discretion not to issue it. So there has been some concern as new businesses have come in and asked for those licenses. I recall much of the discussion and the debate when the board considered it was the concern that if Bartlett didn't allow it, it would hurt our existing restaurants and liquor establishments that have liquor licenses because those patrons may go to the adjoining town that has it. At that point, we were keeping track of who had approved it, who had not. In the beginning, many had an ordinance that prohibited it, and then they repealed those ordinances. And one by one, most of the surrounding towns, before we adopted ours or soon after, approved of video gaming. Now, I've also researched the issue. The prior board had questions about the ability to have different hours than the liquor license and some other things. And I wrote legal memos relative to those questions. And there was concern raised that there may be, at some point, too many. And will the market control that? Or will there be an ability to limit them? And what I have stated in the past is your greatest control over these, at least with respect to new video gaming establishments, is with respect to the creation of a new liquor license. And then whether or not, after the village board passes an ordinance, it creates a new liquor license, whether or not the village president, acting in his capacity as the local liquor commissioner, then issues a liquor license to that establishment. The other issue that comes up is that all of these establishments where they could go are zoned commercial. And they require, in those zoning districts, a special use permit for a liquor license. We looked at the issue of could there be separate zoning control over the issuance of video gaming? And my conclusion in the prior research was that there really couldn't be zoning control per se. I've talked to a number of other municipal attorneys, the municipal league, looked at other towns' ordinances. And I did find in one city that had a fairly comprehensive ordinance that prohibited an undue economic concentration of video gaming establishments. And in the area of video gaming, even though the act was adopted in 2009, it took the state a couple of years to arrive at their administrative rules. And there's no case law yet because the licenses are fairly new. So you have to look at other areas of the law and apply those laws by analogy and see the trends in those. And so one of the questions is a home rural municipality. Bartlett has the authority to adopt ordinances pertaining to its government and affairs. And that's a fairly broad range of authority for a home rural municipality, most generally municipalities over 25,000. As a general rule, including our Illinois Constitution, unless the legislature says that a home rural municipality is preempted, then you have the power to enact ordinances. That seems like a pretty clear rule that we should be safe in adopting a comprehensive ordinance dealing with video gaming. But there are a whole other line of cases where they deal with the issue of whether a municipality can have concurrent jurisdiction with the state. And the courts look to whether or not it's a matter of local concern, state concern. They weigh those things. And the most recent case that I can recall is the City of Chicago versus StubHub. And the City of Chicago had adopted an ordinance dealing with ticket brokers, trying to tax them and regulate them. And the Illinois Supreme Court said, "That's really more an issue of state concern. You're out of the mix. You can't regulate that." And if that's the case, then you have to look at the history, the legislative history, and look at what the video gaming app provided. And they clearly convey or empower the Illinois Gaming Board with broad jurisdiction and power over video gaming. As we have our ordinance, I believe, it is legal, it is constitutional. And I, as I've talked to other municipalities, we've talked about ways around these ordinances. And I believe there is a loophole that isn't an issue yet. But as the village may choose not to create new liquor licenses, I think what you may find is, aha, a potential licensee being disingenuous, could say, "I just want a liquor license." Not tell you that they have any intention of putting in video gaming. You issue the license. We're back to our current ordinance where it's automatic. And then, lo and behold, you have another video gaming establishment that you weren't aware of or planning on. And it would fall through the cracks. So this is an issue I spoke to the Corporation Council for the City of Elgin, and they've adopted a more expansive application process and requiring applicants for liquor licenses disclose their intention. I'm not sure how long you could say, "I don't have that intention," and how many years before an intention could change. But clearly, if they come in, ask for a license, and within a year, and then ask for video gaming, I don't think that's accurate or representative of their intentions. And I think you would be safe to close that loophole by further amending what you have. With regard to whether or not to do what the city that I spoke of about an undue concentration, I think there are some, I'd be concerned with the concurrent jurisdiction issue. But I will also tell you what that does is it changes your focus. And then it would be based on a first come, first served. You could not say that, "We're only going to have so many, but if you already have a liquor license, you get one." But the new guys in that same area, that would be too great a concentration. So let's pick an area where there are licensees who hold licenses, and they could go to the state and ask for it, but they haven't yet. They're thinking about it. And in the interim, in that same geographic area, a new business comes in that's in the business of video gaming, and they ask for one. You know, it would be almost then on a first come, first served basis. So that would be my concern with trying to do an undue economic concentration. One, the question of concurrent jurisdiction. But two, the decision being may base strictly on a first come, first served basis. The Commerce Clause prohibits, the Constitution prohibits, economic protectionism and favoring in-town businesses from out-of-town businesses. That being said, you still have the control over the liquor license in the sense of your greatest area of discretion, not so much as to whether or not to grant a special use permit, but more so in whether or not to pass an ordinance, create that Class B or class whatever they're looking for, and create it. So we are very diligent in, if there's a business that comes in, they have to go through the step of requesting a liquor license to be created. And as a business may have one and then fail, 30 days after that business has been closed down, we take the formal action of reducing it. So if you had seven Class Bs and a business fails, we pass an ordinance reducing it to six. And if a new business comes in and wants a class whatever, and that's what it takes, we bring that to the board, and that's one of the steps when they're coming through and you're adopting your final ordinances would be. It may not happen sequentially that way, but they'll need all three steps. An ordinance approving a special use permit for that business, as well as an ordinance to create the class of license that they're seeking. And then ultimately, although, as a custom, the village president asks if there's any objection to the issuance of a license, he's not required to do that. He has the authority to issue or to not issue that license within some legal constraints, but essentially, as long as there's due process and a fair treatment, that it's not discriminatory or arbitrary, he has the discretion not to issue that. So those are the issues relative to maybe what you're concerned with is the plethora or, you know, and over-concentration of these type of businesses. I don't know whether the market, I can't imagine that there can be that much demand, but apparently, some of these businesses know more than I. And they are seeking them. And I know trustee Martin raised the concern about it looking like another, you know, mini Vegas. And that should be a concern. But to say it can't be in a certain area, what's too many? As I say, trying to define that, the devil would be in the details. And what's too many for one area is going to be different for another. Along 59 would be different than in the downtown area. Where are your residents? How close are they? Which would be your normal issues you're looking at from a zoning standpoint. But again, I think, and we've written memos before relative to the issue, you really don't have zoning control. And we did talk about this undue economic concentration with the one city that's done it. But as I look at that further, I think there's these drawbacks that your best control is in the area of your liquor control. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to expand on anything or answer those questions.
So does the board have any questions, staff or Mr. Morantz, on this subject?
And we're just talking about what Brian's discussion is at the moment. We're not talking about these two applicants. Or are we lumping this all into one subject?
I think we have one item at a time. And if, you know...
I don't have a question. It certainly seems if you found what you consider to be a loophole, then I certainly would like to see us move forward, moving forward with addressing that. And if it so pleases the remainder of the board and staff, I would ask that Brian draft something for us to look at.
Agreed.
Well, are you talking about the undue economic concentration?
No, no, no. The loophole, insofar as, as I understand it, loophole may be the wrong word.
That's what I used.
Yeah, I'm using Brian's words. I'm using the attorney's.
Ordinance on top of the ordinance loophole.
Right. And now, there's a modification to our current ordinance that requires an applicant for any liquor license to disclose if they intend to seek a video gaming license within a one-year, two-year, whatever reasonable period you think is legal and reasonable.
Right.
Because I do agree, I think that gives us some idea, at least, of what we're looking at. So again, unless there's any objection from the other board members, any other discussion regarding that, I'd like to see Brian put something together on that.
Yeah, I would just tail under that. That's the more expansive application process that we're talking about.
I believe that's kind of what you said. In other words, making it a part of our current liquor license application. Maybe it's just the addition of a couple of questions. I don't know.
Right. It's a little more involved than that. But yeah, we would revise the application portions of the liquor control ordinance and make them, the form itself and the requirements. But that would be the gist of it.
And as I understand it, in a nutshell, you're saying the undue economic concentration, again using your words, is tricky.
It sounds like a problem.
I think it invites a challenge.
And do we want to be at the lead of the forefront of that challenge?
As I say, there's only one municipality that I know that's done that, and they have a vested interest in protecting similar business in their town.
I'm sorry. But with regard to the undue economic concentration, we would have to make a legislative finding that, for example, two licenses per acre is an undue concentration. So then that would open us up to perhaps an equal protection challenge for what's the difference between two licenses and 2.1 licenses per acre?
I think that's part of the issue.
And we don't have cases or even other municipalities that have the same or similar regulations that we'd be able to point to and say, "Okay, City of Chicago got away with 2.1, so we should be able to get away with 2.1."
And that necessarily wouldn't stop them. They'd just find another place in town.
Right.
Well, that's right. And then it doesn't take into account sort of your different areas.
Right.
The demographics and the surrounding uses. Now, maybe you could draft one along those lengths. A particular county, city in question, said, "We don't want an undue economic concentration. We're going to adopt administrative rules to interpret that in the future." And they haven't done that yet, as far as I know.
I'll look at that.
Now, do you think that the consideration, the undue economic concentration, is appropriate for consideration within the context of the special use process?
I think it's something to talk about, but frankly, special use and the Chicago Heights case limit what you can talk about with regard to a special use. Unfortunately, they've expanded the idea of a special use when they're saying that essentially, when a municipality says something is a special use, it's really a permitted use for all intents and purposes unless there's some very unusual risk that makes this one different in this district compared to everywhere else. And I think when you start making it a special use condition and treating it different for video gaming than for all your other special uses, in other words, we have standards for a special use, undue economic concentration of a particular use, we don't have. And again, you start getting into that economic protectionism. Are you protecting your current businesses and excluding new ones? I think trying to put it in the zoning setting would be dangerous. And again, you start getting into the issue of the whole scheme of how these were set up in the Video Gaming Act by the legislature was if they have the license, the state has jurisdiction over those things. So I think it's a discussion point that could be raised as you're talking about your concerns over whether or not to grant a special use. But frankly, I think in terms of discretion and what any board, municipal board has, the area of special use and whether or not to grant a special use permit is somewhat eroded. There are, the cases I'm talking about were not liquor cases. It was a church case. So it's a little different, but it's the holding. And there's old cases that talk about how a liquor license is a, you know, privilege and not a right. But, you know, in the area of liquor, the old cases seem to be getting overturned. And there's a different treatment in the state courts and the federal courts and whether or not it's property right. So I think I would concentrate if there's a particular occasion that you find that you could not support. The area of most discretion would be in not creating the license. And perhaps in that discussion, when you say that, it's, you know, there's too many or it's, can't support that. We have too many of those licenses. What are those particular class of licenses? But I think we need to stay away from the undue concentration. You know, I mean, we could make the argument, but I don't think we want to be the test case. And I think there's some other avenues that may be more viable or traditional, so to speak, in defending the exercise of the board's discretion if it's a fit not to do all three steps that are necessary for a particular business to get the license first before they could qualify for video gaming, a video gaming terminal license.
Valerie, Jim, maybe you know this. I know on the yellows up there, has anyone else besides Bartlett Hills and I think Betty's, they talked about getting a license? Has anyone else? Did we bring Clerks up, or did they express?
No, the yellow is people who have our liquor license that could apply for the state video gaming.
Right. And isn't Betty's interested in one, I thought? I thought Betty's was one of those new places that is interested?
Yes, Betty is, on this one, Betty should be red. You're correct. But they went through your special use process and got your liquor. Whether they applied, we'll have to check that, but it could be red.
Okay. And then, you know, we were still talking about the golf course, but are there any other ones that have called in or expressing interest right now?
Not that I'm aware of. And it's possible Betty's hasn't applied for their state license yet because they are still in their build-out. But the ones, when we checked on the 28th, that would be the only other one. I'm sure other people, you know, we've talked to different people that want to come into the village that, besides the ones you currently have in front of you, so you might get more outside businesses, but they haven't made application. And it's possible you may get some of your existing ones that want to go and take that step to actually make the application to the state. We try to keep a running tab on it, but...
Okay. Based kind of on some of the discussions that we've had, that Brian has done a lot of work on, I recognize that. And we've done quite a bit of discussing on this. The loophole that we're going to address, I just think that we need to move very cautiously and slowly on this entire project here. We don't, at least I don't think, we've really had any, correct me if I'm wrong, really any comprehensive reports yet back about what the gaming is doing so far. It's so much in its infancy that, you know, we may find that we love it or hate it, or somewhere in between. And so I think until we really start getting some of those figures back from Jeff and his division and some of those other things, we just, we need to move with extreme caution here. I don't, I agree with Brian and I think the rest of the board here. We don't want to necessarily be the leaders in the legal end of what can or cannot be done here, other than, you know, the modification to the ordinance, which Brian seems comfortable with. But that's just my two cents on this for right now. I think we need to move very cautiously and slowly.
Well, then, given this large and big issue, I for one would like more time to digest the information presented. So is there consensus to continue this discussion to another meeting?
On item one?
Yes.
Yes. I think we need a lot more discussion on it. It may be more than one meeting. It might be several.
Then I would entertain a motion to continue this issue for further discussion at the next meeting.
So moved.
Secretary, second?
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is the Elsie's Place request for a special use permit to sell beer and wine. Mr. Poncinski, could you take us through this? Present petition, please.
Thank you, Trustee Cammer. This is petitioned by Mr. Chuck Knoblock on behalf of Elsie Highland of Illinois. Mr. Knoblock's in the audience. 225 Main Street. They are, again, the town center, they are requesting a special use permit to serve beer and wine. The village, town center had, this was a site of a deli that used to be in that location. The petitioner, it's next to click photography, they are proposing the video gaming, the dining and refreshments, including beer and wine, as well as they will sell cigarettes for adults that wish to game outside the casino environment in accordance with the new state law. The establishment would include 11 dining seats, which is the entertainment area. This site plan is, this is, sorry, this is the site plan or the floor plan. Obviously, as with all the other entities, the liquor license has to be issued before they can apply for their state gaming license. Their hours of operation proposed would be Sunday, Thursday, eight to one, Friday and Saturday, eight to two. This would match your Class B liquor license. Town center has 161 parking spaces, this use would require 10. There appears to be ample space for parking for this use. The petitioner has provided us with some handouts. There's their menu up on the board, and that was just the one shot, and then the floor plan. Petitioner is present, if you have any questions.
Are you going to have babysitters so they can take the kids to tut-tuts while the adults are?
Chuck, if you'd come up to the podium and.
Hi.
Can I get your name?
My name is Chuck Knoblock, I work for Elsie's Place, I'm the vice president.
Well, do we have any questions?
Sure. I noticed that the facility would be open at 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM depending on the day of the week. Have you given consideration to the residential uses in the area? You know, I mean, I guess I'm concerned about people complaining about the noise at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning.
Yes, I, when I applied with Jim, when we did the permit, the application, we said we would stay within the city, you know, the city rules of what the hours were. I don't think we're going to be open that late, and I don't think we're going to be open till probably 9:00 AM, but 10:00, 11:00 PM, maybe midnight on weekends would probably be as late as we're going to go. But on the report that Jim submitted, you know, we wanted to stay within the hours allowed, so I think it was 2:00 AM here.
Let me point out that their application is consistent with the hours of the Class B. However, in a special use permit, you can apply conditions, reasonable conditions that could be less than would be allowed for Class B, taking into account some of the other factors, such as you raised the issue of residential, which apparently is right above this use. So if they are really going to stick to, you know, close at 11 during the weekdays and midnight on the weekends, that could be a condition that the board considers as part of the special use permit, even though the liquor license has longer hours, the special use permit could have lesser hours.
Have we heard from the neighbors at all? Because I'm assuming that they got their certified.
No, not yet.
Not yet. We have not done the public hearing notice. This is their first appearance before you, so the publications have not gone out, and Mr. Knoblock has not sent anything to any of the neighbors yet.
Okay.
Mr. Knoblock, how many other Elsie's, this concept have you done? Or is this your first one?
We're on number four. We haven't opened any yet because of state approval and licensing, but this is number five.
Okay. Where are those located?
Worth.
Wisconsin?
No, no, all in Illinois, mostly on south side. Worth, Midlothian, Lyons, I'm thinking where the other one is. But they're on the south side of Chicago and Bartlett, and I think we're working on Hoffman Estates right now.
Oh, roughly the same size, same kind of?
Correct, anywhere from 1,200 to 1,400 square feet.
And I noticed your layout's different here, so.
Yeah, there was a deli there before, so that's why I gave you a little rendering because we, you know, there was a restaurant concept before, so bathroom's already existing, so we'll work with the city on doing it. So we're going to re-divise that a little bit.
And I don't see a sectioned off area, so this will be 21 and over only?
Correct.
How many people do you expect to employ?
Seven, eight?
Seven or eight?
Correct. No, the full-time, we'll have a manager, we'll probably have two full-time people, the rest part-time.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, given this board has not completed this discussion this evening on the broader issue of its ability to control video gaming village-wide and the interrelated issue of special use permits for the sale of alcohol and controlling the availability of new liquor license, I would propose holding off on any further discussion this evening on special use requests to serve beer or wine for Elsie's Place. There's a motion to continue the discussion regarding the Elsie's Place petition for a special use permit to a later date after this board has had an opportunity to digest what has been presented this evening and to continue to review the current pending and potential locations for video gaming throughout the village and the legal issues before sending this item onto the Plan Commission. Is there?
So moved.
Is there a second? Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you call the? Trustee?
So we're just going to keep this gentleman in limbo? I mean, that's pretty much what we're doing.
Are we tabling this? Is that a?
Yeah, because of the committee, apparently you're not tabling it, you're continuing it till you bring it, I guess, hand in hand with your discussion. You don't have to, but that's the motion, is to continue it till you complete your review of video gaming village-wide.
Right.
The alternative is you could send it on to the Plan Commission for, just on the issue of the special use permit, ultimately, after the Plan Commission has the public hearing, it would come back, and it would have before you then an ordinance to create a Class B, I think is what this particular applicant is looking for. So, the motion right now is in effect a motion to table, to keep it together with the rest of the discussion, so that's what's on the floor. It could, you know, if that fails, the alternative is sending it on to the Plan Commission.
I don't see why we can't send it on to the Planning Commission and still, you know, we haven't done a final vote. I mean, we don't want to, you know, granted, it's probably, we're not going to say, okay, we have enough, you know, we'll find a medium that we'll, we all can live with, with how many, and go from Brian's thing, but instead of keeping this gentleman, you know, in limbo, let them go through to the Planning Commission while we're discussing the other.
Well, I think there's some things that we need to get sorted out before we can really know what else is going on. And so I think we need to talk more about this than to just move forward with things at this point in time.
You know, I don't want to keep anybody in limbo, especially somebody who's trying to bring a business to our town. However, that being said, I think through a number of discussions from Brian, he's made it clear to us that this is a complicated issue. And I think just the automatic moving forward of an item like that is not necessarily in the community's best interest, when what Brian's telling us is there may be some more things that we want to look at, there may be some more, the potential exists that there could be some ordinance items that we could enact that would answer a lot of these questions for us. And so before we get moving along too quickly, I think, as I stated on the last item, I think it's important that we just, we slow down a little bit here, rein in the horses just a little bit, so we can look at this a little more, with a little more focused eye, a little more carefully. Again, I do not want to hold back a business, I hate to see that happen, but I think particularly in this rather unique circumstance of video gaming combined with a liquor license, I do think it's important that we slow down just a little bit. We've got, like I said, we've got two in the hopper now that are coming up of the video gaming only parlors, we've got a number of our own businesses that have enacted it, and we've got a number of our own businesses that could enact it, and we don't even know what it's doing insofar as economics to the village yet. I don't, I don't think there's been any issues, but at the same time, we should probably have a shoulder-to-shoulder report with what crime there has been raised, and again, I don't think there has been any. But it wouldn't be prudent of us to not look at all these different things before moving forward with any more rapidity. I think it's important that we just slow down a bit, that's my, that's my piece on it.
Well said.
And it wouldn't be an indefinite hold, it would just be a meeting or two or three while we gather the facts regarding?
Absolutely.
The current license holders and their performance? Okay.
So that's the motion on the floor at the time?
Yeah, you need a roll call.
So, call the?
Can you repeat the motion here for me, please?
The motion is to table consideration of Elsie's Place until such time as we hear back from staff regarding video gaming for new businesses? Correct?
It seems to me that's logistically correct, right? We spent the whole entire beginning of the committee meeting here discussing what the regiment is going to be for these new video gaming operations, and now we've got two of them that are next on the agenda, and we're trying to shove those in before we have an apparatus, right?
Not necessarily shove, I mean, I mean, whatever we decide, they're still going to have to.
If anything we can do to speed it up, I get that, yeah.
Well, right, yeah, whatever we decide, they're going to, you know, we have the final vote, and we're going to say, okay, it's this and this and this you have to do. But, I mean, if it has to go to building, and that's going to take a meeting, then it's, he's still two months behind before he starts, you know, knocking down walls and putting walls up.
I think that's a valid point as well.
I agree, it's not an easy decision, but.
No, I understand, and I don't want, you know, 20 in one area, so.
Well, the motion really was, is to continue the discussion regarding Elsie's Place, a petition for a special use permit to a later date after this board has had an opportunity to digest what has been presented. So, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Is there any reason that we couldn't send both Elsie's, because the next one's going to be exactly the same, I'm assuming?
Right.
Send them both to planning while we do this?
That's what I, we're not holding it up on one hand.
But are we giving them some presumptive idea of what could happen, and then we might have to pull it back and say, no, we're not?
I guess that's my concern.
That would be my concern as well.
If Brian comes back to us a month from now and goes, oh, hey, by the way.
You can do it this way.
You could do it this way, we just found out, or some case just went through, or something like that. Now we're talking about really redirecting the entire process. I mean, right now, the horses are still in the starting gate, to use a betting reference.
Well.
And I'm just saying, let's hold for a second.
Right, right. I mean, arguably, they'd have a vested right under the current regulatory scheme, so we couldn't go ahead and change the rules and then apply the new rules, because, you know, that's ultimately for a judge to decide, but they would have a vested right under the current regulatory scheme, be that the special use process or the liquor license process. But I guess what we're, what we're doing is just kind of putting a hold on it while we do further study.
We're attempting to create a situation where they aren't trying to hit a moving target.
Okay.
Where these businesses that are coming into this know what to expect and what the playing field is like, correct?
That's one issue.
Okay.
There's, I mean, there's other. I agree that anyone who's got an application in is going to play by the rules as they exist. These folks have been upfront, saying we're looking for video gaming, so my loophole isn't directed at these, that I'm proposing to close, isn't directed at these folks relative to.
Fair enough.
You know, magic that I may come up with, I'm not suggesting that, but I think if you want to, you know, further consider this, it makes sense that they stay together. Either way, you can keep it with the first item as we further discuss it, which is the motion on the floor, or if that motion fails, you could send it on to the Plan Commission and eventually work with the process and it comes back, and you'll have a vote within the current parameters of the law at that time, and ultimately decide whether to create a new Class B liquor license. One issue for the board, and then the next question for the mayor. If that were to be created, is whether or not to issue that license. So, I think what you've got is the current motion on the floor.
I'd say we've got a motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Yep.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Shipman?
Yes.
Your tiebreaker. You get the vote.
President Wallace?
Yes.
Motion passes. Petition for a special use permit to serve liquor for Elsie's Place will continue and be brought back to the committee after the board completes its discussion regarding video gaming for new businesses. Next item is Maxine's special use request to sell beer and wine. I would ask the staff to summarize this request as well. Jim, take it away.
Thank you, Trustee Cammer. This is a petition by Gary Leff of Laredo Hospitality for Maxine's. They would like to locate at 801 South Route 59 in the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. Again, it's a special use to serve beer and wine in conjunction with establishing a restaurant that would also allow video gaming. They would, are hoping to occupy a portion of the former Blockbuster video site, or, yeah, Blockbuster video site that is out of business and is being reworked into other space in the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. This is the floor plan for the Maxine's. It would have 30 seats, as well as the entertainment area with five gaming stations, which is allowable, and five additional guest seats. They again would be applying for the Class B liquor license and would be seeking the special use for that liquor license. Again, the hours would be Sunday through Thursday, eight to one, Friday, Saturday, eight to two, as part of the Class B liquor license. The shopping center has 185 parking spaces, this use would require 21. There is ample space for this in that shopping center, and here's some pictures of what Maxine's would look like. And there's their menu, again, a little different than the other one, but still, it's similar to what you saw with Stellus. And there are here Mr. Leff and his assistant, and Charity Johns, who has worked with them on Stellus. Do you have any questions?
Is there any discussion from the board?
Same as last time.
Yeah. As with the last two items, I would entertain a motion to defer and continue the discussion on the petition for special use permit to sell beer and wine for Maxine's until the board completes its review of the broader issue of the video gaming for new businesses.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Shipman and seconded by Trustee Ranky. Please call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Shipman?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes.
Motion passes. To the representatives for Elsie's and Maxine's who are here this evening, we do apologize for the inconvenience and delay this may cause. We will try to resume the discussion of these three items at the next committee of the whole meeting in September 17. Thank you. That's all I have.
Concludes, the next item on the committee of the whole agenda is license and ordinance, typically chaired by Trustee Cammer. I would ask Carbonaro.
Carbonaro.
Typically chaired by Trustee Carbonaro, I would ask, Trustee Ranky, can you lead that up for us?
Okay. So this is the proposed anti-nepotism ordinance, which is just a fancy way of saying that the village would be prohibited from hiring the relatives of elected or appointed officials. There is a, it would not affect any current employees, so no one would be fired as a result of this ordinance. It's designed to protect staff from the influence of other staff or elected officials to get somebody hired. Not pointing any fingers at anybody at the village, I think I made that comment last time, but there's just a perception that, you know, we hire our kids to work for public works or the golf course, and I- public works or the golf course, and I, I think we can, we can stop that, we can end that perception. There is an override requiring a three-quarters vote of the corporate authorities, so that would allow us, if we had an exceptional candidate, to say that even though this person is related to an elected or appointed official, we're going to hire them anyway. But that would require essentially a unanimous vote, except for the person that is related to that individual. I think that pretty much covers it all. It's pretty straightforward, not, not too lengthy at all.
Thank you. I would say, maybe we change it to two-thirds, because you take out the one, that leaves six if the president votes, and four out of six have to vote yes. I mean, because we're not a divisible number by four.
Well, if I have the, if I have the numbers right, so if it's, the total number of corporate authorities would be seven.
Right.
So if one of us, and it may not necessarily be one of us, it could be, you know, a staff member's relative, but assuming that it's one of the elected officials, that official would have to accuse themselves, and then everybody else would have to vote for that exceptional candidate. So it's designed to be difficult, but not insurmountable. But I understand what you're saying, you want to make it a little bit, maybe one vote easier.
Well, not necessar, no. Say it is one of us, and the president would vote, that would be six votes, because you have seven and one's taken out.
Right.
So, three-quarters, what is three-quarters of seven? It's, you know, let's use numbers we're divisible by.
Well, that would make sense, but even if you did this...
So four out of six have to say yes.
Yeah.
Versus, what?
Six out of seven.
Four and a half versus out of...
Six out of seven. Yeah, math isn't my strong suit, but I...
Oh, it is six out of seven.
Yeah, it would have to be six out of seven. So you would prefer an approach that uses four out of seven?
If one of the people...
Can you say a super majority?
Yeah, super majority, that's our...
No, you have to spell it out.
Super majority, we're...
Well, I guess the only issue then is, if somebody's not here, you know, then you've got to keep waiting till we have a meeting where you have a full board to make that decision if it's three-quarters.
Unless that person that's not here is...
Because it would require six out of seven, including the village president, if it's three-quarters of the corporate authorities. And that was by design. Now, if you said, you know, two-thirds, you just change your numbers of department of, you're going to require five. So, either way.
Okay. Well, that's something that if we pass this on to the full board, we can amend that at the time.
I did have a question on this. What would the impact be of, say, a 20-year employee who's been here, whatever department, and then their spouse decides to run for an elected office?
None, no effect at all.
Okay, because I didn't read that in here, I didn't really feel it addressed in here.
Yeah, it's...
I know where it says, like, current employees, so somebody who is, is now an employee, if they had, as long in, in the interest of clarity here, do we really have any of this? There's none that I'm aware of.
I didn't understand your question.
How do I simplify it? I don't think there's any elected officials who have relatives that are working for the village that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of any.
So, I know part of it, so that there was this image of it, and the truth is, it doesn't exist, but I understand, I understand the ordinance, and I'm in favor of the ordinance. I just want to make sure that, that's stated clearly, that there isn't any of that, nor has there been, to the best of my knowledge. But again, I didn't understand, like, again, I'd hate to see a longtime employer, any employee, who was working here, and then a relative of theirs decided to run for an office. Are we saying that we're not allowing that?
No, you could still run for office.
Okay.
So it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect...
But someone who's elected off, in elected office or appointed office, their relatives then can't go and apply for a job, as long as they're holding office.
Correct, unless they get voted in. Unless we...
Unless they get that two-thirds, three-quarter majority.
Right.
Okay, okay. But yeah, as long as, because I didn't, I read through it twice, and I didn't really understand if that was still considered okay, if you're saying that is. I've got no issues with it.
Right, it won't interfere with CBAs, it won't interfere with the police department or public works, you know, it won't interfere with anybody that currently has a job. So it's only prospective.
Okay. But again, people who are employees today, or somebody gets hired five years from now, and then a year later, their spouse, uncle...
Their grandfather in there.
...decides to run for a local office, that's still okay?
Right, correct.
Yeah. I've got no issues with it then.
Okay, so since I am apparently chairing the License and Ordinance Committee, is it...
By default.
That's primarily because an hour before the meeting, I found out that Governor wasn't going to be here, so...
Fair enough, not a criticism at all, it happened.
Well, should, should we nail down that two-thirds, three-quarter thing?
Yeah, it's to your preference.
I mean, if we're going, if, I would assume the next step on this then would be, that would be before us for a vote, correct?
Yes.
So then we should determine that two-thirds, three-quarter. I don't have a dog in a fight, so I'll let you guys...
I don't either.
What I would suggest is...
I understand what you're both saying.
Is that we wait for the, the other two, presumably the other two trustees will be here next meeting, and we just have all of us make that determination.
And just move it to committee at home?
Right, right.
So what you're really saying is, if you have any relatives that need a job, apply now.
But, but I would, I would like to move it on up to the board level next time, is that correct?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, we can make the adoption of the ordinance at that point.
What about babysitting? Is it bad or not able to babysit?
We can have option A, option B with, you know, two-thirds or three-quarters.
Yeah, I think we should...
Or you could take it, that's great on the spot, your choice.
Okay, so that...